8:00 PM. This is May 23rd, 7:00 PM. And welcome to the joint meeting of the Clark County Council Representatives, who are present here tonight, and city council from around the county that are here tonight, and some staff from the counties as well. I thought we should begin by just a brief introduction so we know who's here, so we recognize your face. I'm Karen Del Bowerman, Clark County Council Chair. And let's do Clark County first. If you're Clark County, speak up.
I'm Dick Rylander, I'm councillor for District 5.
I'm Kathleen Otto, county manager.
And I'm Mark Gasaway, the county finance director.
I think maybe that's it. How about Battleground? No one from Battleground? How about Camas?
Jeff Swanson, interim city administrator.
Hi Jeff.
Greg Anderson, Camas council member.
Shannon Roberts, Camas City Council.
Say again?
Shannon Roberts, Camas City Council.
Hi Shannon.
Hi Karen.
How about La Center?
Suppose I can cover them as well. Jeff Swanson, Community Development Director for the city of La Center.
Any others you'd like to do too? No.
I think that's it. I think-
Okay. Ridgefield?
Ridgefield.
Anyone from Ridgefield? How about Vancouver?
Hi, can you hear me from Ridgefield? Mayor Jennifer Lindsay?
Thank you for covering because we understand there's a Vancouver meeting tonight.
What was that?
Thank you for covering because we understand there's a Vancouver meeting tonight.
Okay, and then there's also from Ridgefield, I think councillor Judy Chipman was trying to get dialed in as well.
Thank you. And how about Washego? No one from Washego? Okay, well, we'll go ahead and get started. And as you saw on the agenda, there are three of us who are going to speak in, I would say, very general and relatively quick fashion. And we're going to just each address a couple of topics. And then the whole rest of the last half is for discussion, for sure. So I'm going to just give a brief overview that says RCWs allow for two approaches, so why choose the one that we did? And then, secondly, why a vote of the people? That's a question that I've been asked, so that's a good one to deal with. Mark Gasaway is going to talk about the money, which is one of our favorite topics, but this one kind of pins us down. How will the county use its share? And how can the cities use their share? And what if my city doesn't want to participate? And then Kathleen Otto, the county manager, will round it up with, okay, let's just talk about limits on the city councils advertising. And a public forum before the August vote may help. How about participating in that? And then we'll have the Q and A. So let's begin with looking at the RCWs that allow for two different approaches for public safety sales tax items. One of them is sales and use tax for juvenile detention facilities and jails. That one is authorized, of course, by an RCW with the sole purpose of monies received from any tax imposed under this section to be used, now get this quotation, "for the purpose of providing funds for costs associated with financing, design, acquisition, construction, equipping, operating and maintaining, remodeling, repairing, re-equipping, improvement of juvenile detention facilities and jails." Well, how about body and dash cams? Not covered in that RCW, which if you want to look that one up, is 82.14.350. This is the way that we went back in November of 2021 in the general election with a sales tax proposed of 0.1%. A point... A 0.1 of 1%. That just sounded too little, but that's what it is. And that was in the form of Prop 10, which failed mightily, 58 to 42. So we're not going to go that way again. We've dissected why we think were some of the many reasons, actually, why people did not vote for it. But probably one of the biggest ones was that they were confused with the financing because we did want to use it for body cams. And that particular sales tax is not shared with the cities. So what was involved was using the tax in our general fund, exactly as outlined, which it has to be, in the RCW for juvenile detention facilities and jails. And then that would have freed up that money that we were already spending on, in that particular category. And we would have used that freed up money for the body cams and dash cams and their maintenance. A little bit too complicated. And we think that that was one of the big reasons why it failed, but we can talk more about that later if you wish. There is a second way in which the public safety sales tax can be collected. And that's the one that we're talking about now. And if you want to read more about it, that's in 82.14.450. This sales tax, 1/10 of 1%, requires no movement of the funds, like I was describing the last time around, because it can be used basically, basically for any public safety purpose. And Mark will talk more about that in a little bit. But it must be shared, and I emphasize the word must, be shared between the county and the cities, with 60% retained by the county and 40% distributed on a per capita basis to cities in the counties. Because this is not complicated, we feel stands a better chance of passage. This is the route that we would, that we're proposing now so that we can, again, fund those body cams. And with any leftover money from that purpose, it could be used for funding positions in the jails or in the sheriff's office, or for that matter, in public safety period. So those are the two choices, and that's why we chose the second one. Now, why a vote of the people? That's pretty straightforward. Again, if you are like me and like to look at the RCWs, that's 82.14.525, where it states very clearly that the legislative authority of the county or city can impose a sales tax upon specific authorization by a majority of the voters, voting on a proposition that is submitted at a special or general election. So it is by a vote of the people. And that's the reason for it. Some have said, well, why not just pass it by an ordinance and then just do it? It's because this RCW says that it will be by a vote of the people. Let's turn to Mark Gasaway and talk more about the money.
Great, thank you Chair. I have a slide that I want to use. Rebecca, if you could bring up the spreadsheet, the second tab. That one, yep. No. Rebecca, could you, yeah, click on the second tab there. There we go. So I just want to show, this is just a brief illustration of what this sales tax, what revenue it would generate. Right now, a 1/10th sales tax countywide will generate about $12 million. And we know this because we have examples in the county already where it's generating about that much revenue. As councillor Bowerman mentioned, this sales tax is split. It's split between the county and the cities, 60/40. And so this diagram just illustrates that. And then, within the cities themselves, it's split by population. And I just use the 2020 population figures to give you an example of what revenue would be generated for each of the cities that are on today. There's a lot of flexibility in the use of this sales tax, being a public safety sales tax rather than the juvenile detention and jail sales tax. There's a much broader use that it can, that it can be programmed for. For example, the county's main intention of going after the sales taxes so that we can fund our, the ongoing operations for our body camera program. Clearly, we believe that this will generate more than sufficient revenue for that. In fact, it will probably generate an additional amount that we'll be able to use to help support our sheriff's department, both on the patrol side and on the correction side. So that is the intention of the county's use at this time, but it's much broader. The cities have other opportunities to use this. For example, those that have fire departments, public safety is, or fire departments are considered public safety. Those that have EMS services and contracts with EMS services, it can be used for that as well. So if you have any questions on this, I can refer you to, there's a MRSC guide that specifically outlines the various purposes that this can be used for. But it, but it's quite broad. And it would allow not only the county to achieve the objectives that we're looking to do, but also the cities as well. So the way that this is implemented, it is a countywide sales tax. So there's no options for cities to opt out. It's not an opt-out type of a thing. The only complication is if a city, which none of the cities in Clark County have, have, if you've already implemented the sales tax, then you retain 85% of the sales tax that the city's already, already receiving. That's not the case here. So at this point, and with the notification of vote, prior to the August 2nd vote, when this is, is going to go on, the cities won't have an opportunity to implement this. So I'm not going to spend a lot of time talking about the what-ifs of what would happen. So that's really a very high-level overview. And when we get to questions, I'm happy to take more questions about this. Again, these are just projections at this point. So that's, you know, the information that I think would be salient to discussions within the cities. So that's all I have, Chair.
Thank you. And Kathleen Otto, if you would talk about staying legal?
Yes, so I'm sure our city partners realize this, and I would encourage you all to talk with your legal counsel within your cities. But as you know, as our agencies, both legislative and executive, we cannot go out and try to sell this to the public. We're simply only allowed to share the facts. I know we're looking at getting a PAC set up so that there is community members who may be able to go out and advocate and help get this in the community and encourage the community to support this. But as a public agency, we do not have that authority only to share facts. And the other piece I just wanted to share briefly is that we're looking at a public forum potentially in the middle of June, in which our law and justice partners will join as well, again, just to share the facts of the public safety sales tax and the impacts that it could have on our business and our safety and our community. So this is both internal with our courts or sheriff and our prosecuting attorney. We've also opened it up to some of our law and justice committee partners. That includes other jurisdictions as well. If that's something that you're interested in participating in, please let me know. And we can certainly coordinate with you as well to be part of that conversation. So if there's any questions that I can ask or answer, I am more than happy to. Otherwise, that's just, you know, I encourage you to work with your, your teams and your legal team, just to make sure that we're staying in the parameters of what we're allowed to do with regards to discussing this. Thank you.
I think the hardest one is when you're giving facts to avoid creeping into the sales position. Having been through this back in November, that was, that was my perspective. And, you know, you just have to catch yourself and stop. But it is something kind of difficult to stop yourself from doing sometimes because you want to see it passed if you're, if you're in that lane. So councillor Rylander, and anybody else? Would you like to add anything? And then let's open it up for all kinds of discussion.
Sorry, wide open to hear what the cities have to say.
Well, I don't know if we have to start with you, Jeff, since you represent two cities, but...
I think, I don't want to speak on behalf of either city. I think that the groups of policymakers probably need to consider the information that's been presented. And maybe the best way to get some feedback back to the council would be, vis a vis, some kind of letter from the councils? Or is it acceptable for the cities to pass resolutions if they choose to support this?
Yes, so we actually have a draft resolution. If it has, I'm surprised it hasn't been sent to you guys yet. So I'll follow up with staff. But we do have a draft resolution that we would like the city councils to consider in supporting the public safety sales tax. So we'll get that out to you.
Okay, and just full disclosure, it may be out there, but I may just not have seen it. So, yeah, those are my thoughts. So obviously, some work to like, run the different options to ground with policymakers and derive what their preferences are.
Are any of the cities having their own propositions on the ballot in August that are for a sales tax or any tax? I think Battleground is, but maybe that's all?
No.
No, not, not at this moment, Karen. We are still discussing whether or not to put something on the ballot for November, but not August.
Karen?
This is Shannon. Just a couple clarifying questions. No, we don't have anything on the ballot concerning sales tax this, this fall. So if I understood correctly, there's no way to opt out of this?
That's, that's correct. Mark, why don't you mention that?
The county, the RCW, I guess it gives authority to the county to pass what's called a countywide sales tax. And so we, and that's exactly what this is. It's a countywide sales tax. So it's, and a good example of how this works, currently, we have a 1/10th mental health sales tax that's assessed countywide. And then it's dedicated to mental health issues throughout the county. This is very similar. It's 1/10th sales tax that's imposed countywide. And again, as I mentioned, with this being on the August ballot, it would, it would be a countywide sales tax. The only, the only other, I guess, situation would be if a, if a city had already imposed this, but none of the cities in, in Clark County have imposed this. So there's a different calculation if a city has already imposed it. So that's kind of the opposite issue of you're asking. You can't opt out, but if you had imposed it, the calculation for your city would be different.
I understand, thank you. I'm just thinking broadly over the whole spectrum here. We're looking at affordable housing. And if people are taxed even more, how, how are we going to make housing affordable? Even though it is a small amount, 1/10th of 1%? Then we have the mental health tax, and we have lots of other taxes. And I just am concerned about the overall tax situation in affordable housing.
I'll just speak to that. Shannon, I share your concern. And I have wondered sometimes if that may be why, back in November, Prop 10 failed. But we're, by putting it to a vote of the people, the, 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 we feel like the right folks are making the decision. It's not just the council, you know, that is making that decision in anybody's behalf. So there's a level of comfort and certainly appropriateness in that. We don't know if that actually entered in back in November. Some people said, well, we don't want money to go to a jail. Others said, we don't want money to go for body cams. And frankly, we were surprised to hear all of those things. And we would have been much less surprised by hearing more of what you were just now saying. So it'll be, it will be a learning curve, I think, for us as we get feedback.
Councillor Bowman, Bowerman, isn't that what the people elected you for, to make those decisions?
I'm sorry, would you say that again?
I said, isn't that what the people elected you for, is to make those decisions?
Well, not this one. Because the RCW requires that it is a vote of the people in order to have a sales tax. And so we abide by that.
How many times have you guys taken the banked capacity for property tax?
Well, over how many years? I don't know, maybe Mark could say, not over the last couple.
You're asking about the banked capacity or the 1%? Actually, actually, not even the bank, but banked or, or just the 1%? I believe last year it was not taken. I think it was taken the two years prior to that, so.
Does anyone else have any thoughts about the public safety sales tax and questions? How it maybe pertains to your city?
Yeah, I'm just thinking it's perhaps the wrong time to go about doing this. I mean, we have inflation that's through the roof. I think the county is probably trying to skirt some of the more difficult choices that they need to make and just wants to put this out to the voters. So I think it's a horrible idea myself.
Well, there are, the reasons that it is being done are the reasons for how the funding is to be used. And there is high demand, as you've undoubtedly been reading in the papers, relative to Clark County, not relative to your cities necessarily, that we have the, the funding capacity for additional positions in the sheriff's office as well as the body cams. So it's in response to those, those needs that are voiced by the people. You know, not everyone is in, is in unison. And that's one of the difficulties of, of reading what is the best way to go forward right now. So we'll find out.
But the city of Camas has funded their body cams on their own. So why do you guys need to go out and, and for a sales tax vote?
Well, we would, we would like to, but we don't have that amount in general fund. And in fact, the general fund is decreasing over the years. And Mark can talk about that with you offline if, if you want the details on that. It is not a pretty picture. That I think you would agree with, right Mark?
Yes, and I can share that our general fund, the expenses have been exceeding the revenues for quite some time and continue to do so moving forward. And I'm more than happy to share more detailed information, if you'd like, with our six-year forecast.
Ms. Bowerman, Philip Johnson from Battleground. Mr. Gasaway, of the $12 million that's projected, how much of it comes from the unincorporated? How mu, how much comes from Hazeldale?
I, I can't give you by specific geographic area, but I can tell you approximately about, I would say, 40% of the sales tax is generated in the unincorporated area and 60% within the cities themselves. That's an approximation.
So the, the cities are the generators, obviously. But the numbers are reversed. And I understand the RCW. In Battleground as an example, it's $800,000. We, we know what a 10th of 1% is. And so what, of the 400,000 plus that you, you'll take from the city of Battleground, what benefit is there to the citizens of Battleground? What, what, are we going to see sheriff's deputies? No. We pay for jail services already. What, 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 how are we going to get $430,000 worth of benefit? I understand that the county's going to buy cameras. $367,000 for Battleground won't buy us cameras. So we're, we're, we're left out there somewhere. So can someone explain to me the benefit of $450,000 coming out of Battleground in this bill? In this action, excuse me?
Yeah, I, I'm not sure where the number, the 450,000 comes from. However, I, you know, if you, if you want a detailed analysis of the impact on Battleground, I'd be more than happy to help you with that.
I, I will send you an email. The, the 450,000 comes from 800,000 minus 367, roughly.
It's pretty easy to do the math. If, if the cities only get 40% of the sales tax, but yet we're contributing 60% of the revenue, I mean, that's pretty clear cut on who's subsidizing who.
Yeah, well, of the 60%, you're going to have probably 80% of that from the city of Vancouver. So I, I'll do the, I'll do the math for Battleground and the smaller cities, but you're not, you're not going to be contributing more than what you'll be receiving.
No, sir, that's not, that's not possible.
Well, I'll, we'll, we'll do the analysis and I'll show you.
I, I look, I look forward to your math. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Ms. Bowerman.
Chair Bowerman, this is Mayor Lindsay from Ridgefield. Can I please ask a question?
Yes, good.
Thank you. I appreciate you gathering us all together to discuss this issue this evening. I just had a few questions. They might be a little bit in the weeds for what we're talking about tonight. But I'm curious about the accounting process and the remittance of payments back to the cities. So my understanding is that the county will collect all of this and then remit back on, I don't know, semi-annual basis? I'm not sure how often.
Let me help you out there. All sales taxes collected by the Department of Revenue, the Department of Revenue would distribute it just like it does every other sales tax on a monthly basis.
So the Department of Revenue will be determining the allocation for the city of Ridgefield from the tax that's collected? Is that correct?
Correct.
And they'll be doing the accounting of all of the amount that is collected?
Correct.
Okay. And how often will the, since the amount that's remitted to the various cities is based on population, how often will those population numbers be updated?
That's a good question. I don't know if that's written in the RCW. That would probably be a question for the Department of Revenue. I'll make a note.
Yeah.
I would, I would guess not more than annually, though. I bet you they wouldn't update it more than once a year, so.
Okay, so all the accounting is done by the, by the state, then?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And, you know, back to the concept of how can the funds be used? I think it would be helpful to share the broad paragraph that goes over all of the different ways- ways in which the public safety sales tax can be used because however, city funds are currently being expended, if it includes fire or whatever. Uh, that can uh, the public safety sales tax can go there. It doesn't have to go for the same things that the county would be using it for. Even though we may share some of those services with the cities, the cities don't have to spend their portion of the funds in those ways. So I think that would be a helpful list uh, to uh, share. And Kathleen, I'll get that to you for when you uh, send the information out that is going, sounds like it's going to be substantive. Well, I appreciate your, your discussion. Um, and I appreciate understanding from you uh, what the sensitive areas are for the cities. And we understand that to be the case. And that's actually why we're trying to uh, have the communication with everyone uh, tonight that was able to come. And if you know of someone uh, from a city that would like to have a similar kind of conversation, but couldn't be here tonight, please, please let me know or have them let me know. And we'd be happy to do that as well as the old email that we've already talked about, which is um, a little bit harder to, I think, do the back and forth that gets our, our communication more clear. What else would you like to address?
Is there any sunset on the sales tax?
Troy, did you ask if there was any sunset on the sales tax?
Correct. Is this once passed is just there for?
You're, you're pretty hard to hear, Troy.
Sorry. If once it's passed, is it just there forever? Or does it come back in every 10 years? Or what's the timeline on that?
Karen, did you get that?
No.
His question is, does it have a sunset on it? Or does it stay in perpetuity?
Oh, good question. Um, Mark, are not sales taxes in the RCW set every seven, for every seven years and then they can be uh, re-upped after that? I'm not the sales tax person here, but I, I have read that.
If it's, if it's in the resolution, it depends on the resolution, Chair. So unless, unless, unless a sunset is proposed in the resolution, it would be in perpetuity.
Now, we did not put a sunset in the proposed resolution, correct? Kathleen?
Yes, that's correct.
So Troy, that is the answer to your question then. In the, our first effort with it back in November, we had put a sunset on it. It was a a sunset of, I'm, these numbers are approximate now, about 10 years that the funds would not be collected after that, but they would be set aside in a pool of funds that could fund the stated purpose for 30 years. That was something that was immensely complicated, I think, for understanding and for communicating in the um, effort of explaining that tax. And may have been another part of our communication problem that led to uh, its demise. We don't know for sure, but we, we heard that quite a bit. So it was probably a factor to whatever extent, we're not sure. But that was a little bit different. That was a very different situation, but we did try the, the sunset in that way back in November.
Uh, Karen, this is Shannon Roberts.
Yes.
So uh, concerning the sunset, uh, and I'm really not up yet on on the resolution. So it's too late to insert one.
Would that be true, Kathleen?
I believe so. I believe the deadline was, has already passed in which we had to have information to the auditor's office. Um, and I know Lindsay is on it. Can you confirm that for me, Lindsay?
That's correct. Yeah, the deadline's passed for that.
Uh, so I guess I have a follow-up question for Mark. Can the council uh, make a decision in five years, 10 years to end the tax um, at that time? Or does it have to be in the original resolution?
You're, you're drifting into uh, civil law here. I, I would, in my experience, I would say that yes, the council would probably do that if they proposed to do it. I mean, the, the council has the ability to, to change those things. Um, that's really a question for Leslie.
And Leslie, you're on board, are you not?
Evening Chair. Yes, I am here. Um, I would have to look into that question. I don't have an answer for you at this moment. But I will look into that.
When you uh, find the answer to that, if you would let Kathleen know that can go in with the other information um, that we're going to be sending out. I think that's an important factor.
I would do that, Chair. Thank you.
Shannon, what should that sunset be?
I'm thinking five to seven years.
Something really short-term.
This is Mayor Lindsay. Um, I agree with Shannon about the sunset clause being in there five to seven years. I think having it in perpetuity is kind of a big ask. I also had a question, and maybe this might be helpful um, explaining this to my council and the rest of the council is, so you're estimating a $12 million revenue annually with um, looking back at my notes, about $7.2 million going to the county. Was that correct? So I think that was what your slides showed.
Yeah, yes.
Okay. So, and then um, Chair Bowerman, Chair Bowerman, you mentioned the, the monies will go primarily towards body cameras, dash cameras and maintenance and leftover funds to go towards other public safety expenditures.
That's correct. And those being primarily uh, in the sheriff's office um, and corrections for ongoing staffing uh, relative to the jail.
I think it would be helpful to, if there was um, a budget of like how you expect this money to be spent out, like how much you think are going to be spent on dash cams and body cams and maintenance? How much is going to go to that? How much is going to go to actually new officers that we can expect to see in our community? That will be assisting our departments. Um, these are real things that will affect the people of my city and that they're going to want, they're going to ask me like, well, how am I going to see this money? And if I can see how that money is going to be broken out, how you're planning to budget that, that could, that would be um, helpful. So if there's some way to get um, that kind of information, um, that, that could be useful.
Absolutely. I, I feel like that's very important too. As um, a voter, that kind of information affects me and, and I therefore understand exactly what you're saying. Um, and by the way, the money from this source would not be used for the actual purchase of the body and dash cams because some one-time money could be used for that. This would go, as you also stated, for the ongoing maintenance of that with so many PDRs associated with body cams and uh, all of that would be funded. Uh, and the staffing that makes that possible.
If we could just see a breakdown of that, that would be really helpful.
You bet.
Great. I appreciate that. Thank you.
No, thank you for, for uh, asking about that because I, I think that is important in detail for you. And um, for like the uh, uh, the group that is going to have a, a discussion uh, before the, the votes, when there's a public forum, maybe in a little bit less uh, nitty gritty detail, but still the, the, the basics of it so that it is understood with transparency how the money would be spent.
And just to uh, re-clarify, which I know you've said, Chair. So that funding is the county's way on how we're going um, potentially going to spend that funding. Of course, the, the amounts that the cities receive, the cities will make that determination on what the needs are in your community falling under the RCW for public safety.
Chair Bowerman, this is Shane Bowman from City of Battleground. So I guess, you know, I'm listening to this. My biggest concern is, is that we're having a meeting now to discuss with the cities, your guys' plans that you've already made. And um, that the communication, you know, we're talking sunset clauses, we're talking things like that, that, that maybe some of the cities would like to see. Because you guys know just as well as we do that the, the pot of tax that people are willing to pay at some point in time is going to run out. And when we're trying to, like in the city of Battleground, one of the things we're trying to do is, is figure out how to take care of roads. Um, we've fully funded police. We've, we've, we've made that a priority. And, and we've done that. Now we're working on roads. And when we're looking at options like putting in a tenth of a percent for a transportation benefit district, and then you guys are throwing on another tenth of a percent for um, you know, public safety of which, you know, it does, and, and I get this is outside of your guys' control. The state sets the, the rules as far as the percentages. But I just feel like we've been brought into this and, and maybe it's just the city of Battleground. I'm not sure. But I feel like we've been brought into this too late in the process. And you guys didn't reach out to us before to see what, what our priorities were and where we were at with this. And this is, to me, a knee-jerk reaction to the fact that the sheriff says we don't have staffing, we don't have um, you know, the other things that go along. And we're seeing signs pop up in the county of, you know, Paul so-and-so because they're stealing everything or whatever it is because we, we as a county are not providing the proper um, responses needed. So that's, that's the issue that I have with this whole process. You guys have already made up your, your mind and, in, in the way that you're going through with this. It's already been said it's going to be in the August primary election. Um, it doesn't matter that we, you know, if we were looking at November, it would be crazy for us to do November now. And, and even look at doing a transportation benefit district because you guys just put a tax on in August or ran a tax initiative in August. So the communication just has not been there, at least with the city of Battleground. Now, I can't speak for the other cities, and I think that that's a place that the county needs to do a little bit better is we are part of the county, we pay taxes to the county, and we asked many times, what are we getting for those taxes that, that we pay to the county? And you know, that's what we have to sell to our citizens too. I would definitely think that you guys would want an ally in this and not a council that says we're not getting what we think we should out of this. I wouldn't vote for this. But maybe you think you have the votes. I don't know. But, but, you know, I think doing everything you can do would, and, and reaching out to us would have been better a long time ago.
I hear you Shane, loud and clear. Um, I put out a weekly little video that's about three to five minutes that covers what we just talked about in council that week. And uh, I, the troublemaker of Battleground, Shawna Walters, had noticed that. I had not, the same thing that you just said Shane, that, that what was talked about relative to the public safety sales tax, she felt like had not been talked about with Battleground. And I said um, something along the lines of Shawna, we need to have an opportunity to communicate about this because frankly, as a counselor, I was thinking that the discussion had taken place. And I think there are so many levels that um, and I'm not using this as an excuse, but as a kind of a, a point of explanation, that we don't get through the hierarchy the way we should. And man, have I learned from this how to go about it the next time that we um, have such a need. Um, it's hard to get that communication to everyone that needs to be in on it. And to do it right at the, at time that we're first thinking about something like a public safety sales tax. I understand completely what you're saying, and I think we all agree with you. So thank you for voicing that. As did Shawna and as I've expressed to her in the past, thanks to her for bringing it up, or I wouldn't have even known that we needed to be here tonight. So, and clearly I think we did for um, communication purposes.
Thank you.
Karen?
Yes?
This is Shannon again. Um, could I ask that going forward, any types of taxes like this that are trying to be levied have a sunset clause? Can that be mandatory?
The reason I'm hesitating is that that could encumber future councils. And um, it would be fine with me, I tell you that, as long as I'm chair, but our charter amendment now has me as chair through December 31 of this year. Um, Kathleen, would that be something that staff could help to make sure is sustained?
We can make sure that the conversation is had with the council for decision points moving forward. Um, and like you said, we can't bind future counselors. And just, I know part of the conversation that council has had about this is the ongoing um, does support FTE to support, like the chair said regarding the PDRs and the work. So, you know, it could be that there's enough, you know, in 10 years that we have different revenue streams and we don't need that to continue, but um, it is a ongoing funding source for an ongoing program. Um, so what, we would have to have those conversations to figure out um, the sustainability of that, but we can certainly ensure that that conversation happens with the council.
Okay. Thank you for that. Uh, just to follow on.
Chair, there's, there's one comment that I was thinking about as I was listening to some of these other uh, questions. Uh, one, one of the differences between this particular sales tax and the mental health sales tax. The mental health sales tax was very specific that there was no um, supplanting, there was, there's very specific language in it. This particular sales tax does not have that language. So the, the supplanting requirements that we have with the mental health sales tax are not there. So that is a consideration. Again, if you um, intend to do something um, within your general fund, this, this is general fund revenue. So just throwing that out there.
And Shannon, to kind of loop back with, with what you were saying, for this calendar year, I feel very confident that there will not be an additional tax that is proposed. However, for the future, with you making sure that that conversation takes place, even though we can't um, bind future counselor, uh, councils to it, um, we can bind them to having that discussion. And I think that is something that we should almost codify.
I, I agree with that, Karen. Um, I was actually trying to ask a follow-on question about your processes. If you decide that, okay, in five to seven years, the council's going to revisit this, this sales tax. Um, how does that get brought up? Do, does somebody keep a remembrance file? Or how do you know, okay, it's time to talk about this now? Do we need to continue this tax?
Kathleen?
Uh, we can certainly make note of it, but as you know, I mean, we could have a completely different council and county manager and finance director. And we said there, we'll um, find a way that put it on a, a calendar that does come up um, in time, you know, in the future.
Maybe I'll be around to remind you and you won't need.
I hope so.
That works.
That works.
I'm thinking what kind of a mechanism would work for that? Technology could certainly, certainly work for us if we program it in that way. I know I've got some things that I have just for this year, but that's a different process for just a, what is it now, seven-month period, six-month period that lies ahead? So it's different when it's over a multi-year period when people change who are in those roles. Challenges, we're up to it, Shannon.
Amen.
Well, it is 7:52. We have eight minutes more if there is anything else that is for the good of the order.
Turn off light Battleground here. I'm just really looking forward to Mr. Gassaway's numbers, how this actually comes back.
Someone is speaking and I know I cannot hear. Maybe not.
Troy McCoy was saying he looks forward to Mr. Gassaway's analysis. Is that right, Troy?
Yeah, that'd be great. I, that's exactly what it is because this kind of feels like we can get any Model T as long as it's black.
Did you, did you catch that, Karen?
I caught that we can get any Model T as long as it's black. I remember that from Management 101. Not the best lesson, is it? Well, Mark or Kathleen, do you have any closing remarks?
I don't have anything more. Thank you, Chair.
Kathleen, you'll be getting out this rather lengthy follow-up via email, correct?
Yes, I'll coordinate with Mark and others to just send out one collective email to everybody.
Good. And Shannon, thanks to you again. I appreciate your, your raising the red flag early on. It was actually on day one when you did that, and I, and I thank you for that.
You're welcome.
I have nothing else to contribute for the good of the order. So if you know people who have missed this session and would like to hear it, folks perhaps with whom you serve, Kathleen, if you would include in that email the link where they can find this meeting and, and listen to it all, that would be terrific. And to all of you, thank you very much for joining us. I hope that at the very least, this has been informative. And, you know, the city-county partnership is such a critical one that we really want to do a good job. So thank you for helping us in that, in that path. And I will say this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thanks. Bye-bye.